Meeting of the Palm Springs Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, June 26, 2024. And I'm asking for a roll call, please.
Chair Wermick will be arriving late. Vice Chair Alain.
Here.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Miller is excused. Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Rotman.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. May I have a report on the posting of the agenda?
Yes, Madam Vice Chair, the agenda was posted and available at the City Hall Exterior Bulletin Board by and on our website by 9:00 PM on Thursday, June 20th, in accordance with state policy and procedure.
Thank you. Do I have a motion on acceptance of the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Commissioner Baker, seconded by Commissioner Rotman. I'll in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. This is a time for public comment. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on consent calendar and other agenda items that are not scheduled for a public hearing. If you have, if you would like to address any of the items or any items of interest to the, or excuse me, of subject matter jurisdiction to the commission, please do so at this time. Please note that the Planning Commission is prohibited from taking actions on items not listed on the posted agenda. Three minutes is allowed for each speaker. Testimony for public hearings may be offered at this time or at the time of the hearing. This evening, we just have one item for a public hearing. And if you are here to speak about the extension of an approved development for a storage building, you may do so now or at the time when we hear that item. Members of the public who would like to comment on consent or new business items are directed to comment under this portion of the agenda. Do we have anybody in the audience who would like to address something on the consent agenda or something that is not on the agenda?
We have two members of the public who have signed up to speak on item 1B. The first speaker is Frank Tyson.
I would like to, I'm kind of confused about an item on the agenda, which is the vacation of the road. I was very much involved in the downtown redevelopment. And to my recollection, one of the main reasons for that road was to provide visibility and access to the museum. That was the big argument that was used to build that road. I noticed that the people who want to vacate that road are the so-called they're called, they're called, the, see it here now. Anyway, it's a group of CEOs of large hotels, half a dozen of them, who are here today and gone tomorrow because that's what happens to most of those people. They don't stay here. I was involved in the tourist industry here for many years, owning a spot property called Casa Cody. And I, I realized that what's behind it is the fact that they don't want to move the, the statue of Marilyn Monroe. And I know there's a lot of people in town that were very much upset about the statue blocking the road. And there's all kinds of places for that statue. It can be moved a few feet and keep the road open. So I think the whole thing is kind of this ingenious attempt to keep the statue where it is, which is against many people in the community, the arts community and so on. So I definitely don't feel we should move the vacation of that road. Thank you.
The next speaker is Dan Spencer.
Evening. My name is Dan Spencer. I'm an architect. In my mind, planning is about planning for the future. And it's about a visionary thing. Eastert Williams would not have agreed to the vacation of this street. It's not envisioned in the downtown plan that Frank was just talking about, that was sold and bought by the city people, the people, citizens of the community. It's not a visionary tourist idea because there will be a time in the near future where selfies will be replaced by AI and people will be in their homes and they don't even have to be here. So why do we do this at this time? It lacks total vision about what the community could be. And finally, I would say, we have a pit that has not been developed. And as a designer, I'm wondering how you get a front door to that property anymore? Because you have the west side, which is the museum property, the parking lot, and the east side is right on Bellardo. So you'd have a front door and you'd have to sell your condos with views of Maryland. So that's not a great business idea, right? So anyway, thank you for your time.
Director Hadwin, do we have anybody on the phone? Or is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on items not scheduled for public hearing and not otherwise on the agenda?
We have a few members on the phone. If you are, if you are joining remotely via Zoom and you would like to speak on this item, please use the raise your hand feature, which is located on the bottom of your screen, and I will allow you to talk. I see no additional speakers.
Thank you. At this point, we'll move on to the next item in the agenda, which is the consent calendar. I will look to my fellow commissioners and see if anybody has any items that you would like to remove from the calendar or if there are motions to approve the calendar as it's presented.
I move to approve the calendar as it's presented.
A second.
Will you call for a roll call, please?
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Rotman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Alain?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you. There are no items excluded from the consent calendar for discussion, and we will move on to public hearings. The first item under the public hearing is a request by Jackson Maine Architecture on behalf of West Coast Self-Storage for approval of a one-year extension of a time application for an approved major architectural review application and major development permit application, case number 3.2802, for the construction of a 61,704 square foot self-storage facility with a 912 square foot office on a 3.55 acre undeveloped parcel located at 890 North Gene Autry Trail, APN's number 677260055, Zone M1P, Section 7, Case EOT 2024-0004. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, planning commissioners. The project in front of you tonight is a request for a one-year extension time for a previously approved project. And a previously approved project is for the construction of a new storage facility. And the project site is located at the northeast corner of, excuse me, North Gene Autry Trail and Tamarisk Road. And the site is three and a half acres in size, and it's currently undeveloped. In addition to the primary building, the project includes an RV and both storage area, leasing office, customer parking, and a new landscape. The approved facility is a single story. And for the record, the staff would like to inform you that the final approved maximum building height is actually 16 feet and eight inches, not 20 feet, as indicated on the second page of the staff report. Although the planning commission approved the 20-foot maximum building height, the building height was later reduced to 16 feet and eight inches as a part of the ARC review. This project was subject to the approval of a major development permit application and a major architectural review application. A major development permit application was first reviewed by the planning commission for development features such as access, circulation, building placement, massing, and conformances development standards. And a major architectural review application was later reviewed by the Architectural Review Committee for features such as architectural design, materials and colors, shading, and landscape plan. The major development permit application was originally reviewed and approved by the planning commission on March 9th, 2022. And in April, the Architecture Review Committee reviewed a major architectural review application and voted to continue to address certain design concerns. And the item returned to the Architecture Review Committee in July. And at the time, Architecture Review Committee approved the major architectural review application subject to an ARC subcommittee review. And the ARC subcommittee later approved the final development plan in November and approved the entitlements due to expire on July 20th of this year. After the major development permit application was approved by the planning commission, the development plan was slightly modified during the ARC review process. And these images to show what those changes are, the final approved plan shows an increased amount of plant material along the perimeter of the project site. And the design of the building now has more pronounced articulation on its primary frontage along North Gene Autry Trail. And as the staff mentioned, the building height was reduced from 20 feet to 16 feet and eight inches. And the revision also removed the blue accent color and to make everything all desert neutral in terms of color palette. And Apprican is not proposing any changes to the final approved plans. Since the staff report was prepared, the city engineering department has issued a grading permit and the building path installation process has initiated. And as the next step, following the completion of building path installation, the building path needs to be certified. And at the point, Apprican is ready to obtain a building permit for the commencement of building construction. As prescribed in a zoning code, the approval of the major development permit and the major architectural applications may be extended if an extension of time application is approved. And in order for the planning commission to grant an extension of time, specific findings that are noted in the zoning code has to be met. And one of the findings states that extending circumstances not within Apprican's control, financial inability and the market conditions accepted have prevented Apprican from exercising the entitlement within the initial time period granted. In the submitted justification letter, the Apprican explains that the project has been delayed due to industry-wide team member retention issues and a prolonged engineering value analysis process. As the staff mentioned, Apprican is not proposing any changes to the approved final plans. And Apprican has demonstrated its financial, excuse me, commitment to the project as exemplified by the submission of $125,000 water connection feed, as well as the attainment of a Caltrans encroachment permit and a city grading permit. The building path installation and certification process is anticipated to be completed sometime in July. So that means that the commencement of actual building construction is near. And as analyzed in the staff report, the project meets the required findings as stated in the zoning code. Considering all these facts and the information, findings, the planning staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the draft resolution and approve the extension of the original entitlement approval by one year until July 20th, 2025. This concludes our staff presentation. The Apprican and Apprican's architectables available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any commissioners have questions for staff? Commissioner Baker?
Hi, I have one question. On staff report number four, the subject site has been properly maintained in accordance with the property maintenance standards for this title. There weren't, I mean, we have illustrations, but I don't see anything that was done to demarcate the property line and said there is a fence. I didn't see, it could be there again. I'm just going off of what I can see in the drawings. But it doesn't seem to be that there's anything to mark the property.
The marking of property line is not required. However, it is my knowledge that the Apprican's team has installed a construction fence following the initiation of a building path installation.
Yeah, it just didn't show that on any of the illustrations we received.
Sorry, Commissioner Baker, could you clarify the question?
Well, they were saying they put a fence up and nothing that we've received shows that fence.
So the drawings that you would have are related to the entitlement itself, not necessarily sort of the construction activity that's happening. So it wouldn't necessarily be on those drawings. But there are drawings that would have been filed with the Buildings Department that would demarcate that and show that, which are in file and unfortunately, we didn't include, sorry.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions of staff?
I have one or two. I'm a little bit curious about the reduction from 20 feet from, I looked at the drawings and it was 20 feet from top of parapet and down to 16 feet, which can be a pretty substantial difference in appearance for a building that's that short in the first place. I want to see if I understand correctly. Did the review, the second review done by the Architectural Review Committee, did that see drawings that reflected the lower height? And did they approve that lower height?
Yes.
Okay, so it's just that what is in our packet is probably the first drawings when they came, came to us the first time two years ago and not what the Architectural Review approved?
The packet includes the plansets that were reviewed and approved by the planning commission and by the Architectural Review Committee. So.
Because this still, it still does show 20 feet to the high parapet. On A3.05.
That was the first submission to the Architecture Review Committee. And at that time, the Architecture Review Committee continued the project.
3.04. Okay, so these drawings are not the most current. But they did see, I guess I'm concerned, I just want to make sure that Architectural Review did see and approve the lower building heights.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you. And then, one of the conditions calls replacement, calls for replacement of Queen Palms with California Fan Palms. I didn't see any Queen Palms on the, yes, if they are there, they should be replaced. But I'm wondering. I guess like Commissioner Baker, I'm not seeing on the site necessarily what I'm seeing here in the conditions.
The sheet, let's see.
It's planning commission number, or condition number 12, if you need that.
Sorry, I'm looking, my internet is slow from loading the package, but it says that there were Queen Palms on site that needed to be replaced. So I think, why don't we ask the applicant that question when they come up during public hearing to ask what has transpired?
Why don't we do that? That's a good idea. And then I had one of the, oh, the, I never remember the acronym, so I'll say the Riverside County Airport Land Use Commission. I see that, that there are a number of conditions that they would impose, including a lot of landscape conditions. And I was a little bit surprised by that. Has this project been approved by the Riverside County Airport Land Use Commission? And are these, and are these their conditions for this project? Or is this a generic set of conditions for them?
Well, I'm going to let the Apprican provide the most current status with the review process with Riverside County Airport Land Use Commission. Thank you.
But I think to your, to your question, Vice Chair, we do rely on the conditions provided to us from the ALUC. So what you're seeing in here would represent what was provided to us.
Project specific.
Whether they're project specific or sort of standard conditions they apply within areas of their jurisdiction would be a question for them.
Okay, because some of the things, for instance, they want to, it says that they want to space trees so they don't have large canopy spreads. And I think we like large canopy spreads, so I'm curious if that really applies. The end. Any other questions? All right, then at that point, or at this point, I'd like to invite the applicant to come forward and make a presentation of any information that you have and that you would like us to take into consideration or respond to any of the questions that we've had so far. When we're done with this, there will be an opportunity for public comment. And if there are any additional issues that are raised during that, you will have a chance to respond to those afterwards. You have 10 minutes.
Madam Vice Chair and members of the commission, good evening. My name is Jim Fitzpatrick. I'm a real estate development manager with West Coast Self-Storage. Like to answer your questions first. The height of the, the reduced height was required by the ARC and we reduced the building accordingly. Queen Palms, I believe they've been changed out. And as far as the airport land use committee, yes, we have their approval. And that was a concern of theirs to have not too many canopies. It was kind of a push and shove with the neighbors because they wanted more trees. As you could see, we added more trees along where the RVs are to try to block them from the residents. And yet they, we still had to maintain that separation to maintain that clearance because they don't want birds flying into the airplanes. First, I'd like to say thank you to Noriko. She's put a lot of effort into this job and we really appreciate it. As she mentioned, we had two major issues that really delayed the project. And if you want to know more about them, I'd rather answer those than. And if you want to know more about them, I'd rather answer those than questions, so I'd rather say where we're at. We do have a grading permit. We hired, we retained a general contractor. We had our pre-construction meeting with engineering, so, and grading operations have actually started. The site's been completely grubbed and it looks vacant and the construction fence is up. I was out there today. We are also building permit ready. Unlike a lot of cities, Palm Springs requires the building pad to be certified by both the civil and geotech engineers on a form submitted by the city. And once we do that, they will calculate our fees and they're north of $300,000. And then we pay those fees and then they'll issue a building permit. Now, we are optimistic that we still can make the date. However, I've been in this business a long time, 25 year, or 35 years I should say, and I've seen a lot of stuff happen. Buried trash, bad soil, environmental conditions. We do our due diligence, but we can only drill so many holes. The site also, Palm Springs requires the Caliante or Agua Caliante Indians to observe all the excavation, so we have retained them and they're out there as well. And hopefully we don't find any Indian remains, but that's possible. So we're here today simply as a safety factor, looking for additional time. Again, hopefully we'll make it, but if we don't, we've invested a lot of capital already and we certainly don't want to walk away from that. A little bit about West Coast Self-Storage, we've been in business for about 17 years. We have approximately, well, we do have 131 operating properties. Of those properties, we've developed 29 of them ourselves. And we have three in construction at the current time and six others in development. So basically, we are a real estate company. This is what we do and we really would like to move, we are moving this project forward and just to be safe, we're here tonight. So we're looking forward to be doing business in Palm Springs. And with that, happy to answer any questions.
Please, Mr. Murphy.
You're asking, you're asking for a year extension, correct?
Correct.
And I think what I'm hearing you say is you really don't anticipate needing anything close to that.
We, I would take less, to be honest, if whatever you feel is you'd like to do.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, I will thank you for your information and ask if there's anybody in the audience or in the public who would like to comment on this proposed extension to a project that's been previously approved. Seeing none, I'll check with Director Hadwin and see if we have anybody online who would like to address the matter.
If anyone is on the line remotely who would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand. I see no speakers.
Thank you. Then I will ask my fellow commissioners if there is a motion somebody would like to make or comments that you would like to make before we vote.
Madam Vice Chair, if you could formally close the hearing, or maybe I missed it.
Let me do that. The public hearing is closed. Thank you.
I move to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please call for roll call vote?
Commissioner Rotman.
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Vice Chair Alain.
Thank you and congratulations. Go get them. Next item is unfinished business. We had a report previously from the special program compliance office for a recommendation on cannabis temporary events. We provided a lot of comments and feedback and probably not much help as far as direction goes. And Director Gethard is back to update us on the work since that date.
Good evening, good evening, commission. And we return to you today to finish the discussion regarding our temporary events for our cannabis program. So at May 22nd, we did open a discussion where we proposed locations that were recommended by a work group that consisted of nine members from the local cannabis community. We also discussed at that time some issues and concerns related to those proposed locations. At your direction, we did explore some alternative locations, including city-owned lots and property. And we also did clarify, there was a question with regard to whether or not a temporary cannabis event could be held at a location that held a license to sell alcohol and tobacco. We did confirm, and the confirming email is in the staff report, that you cannot. So that would exclude locations such as our golf courses, because many of the clubhouses do have those permits, as well as the Palm Springs Surf Club, which was, did receive some favorable discussion. So those unfortunately would not be eligible. In addition, we did discuss that there is the restriction that we cannot have these locations on tribal trust land. And then the other issue, again, was the, the sale of the alcohol tobacco. Other considerations in making a recommendation that we wanted to bring up, again, was the odor control as discussed by our odor control consultant. It is very difficult to control the odor even with, you know, some odor control technology being implemented. It's just very difficult, especially in this area. We have a lot of winds and the dry conditions and the scent can often carry. The other item in reviewing, the other cities who have allowed these events is looking at our local ordinance with regard to smoking prohibitions. And we do have a rather strong ordinance for smoking in public. And as outlined in the staff report, it's not allowed at any park. So I know our work group did recommend all the parks, but that would exclude smoking. So there would not be able to allow that type of usage if we did go that route. Alternatively, some cities have amended their municipal code for smoking, but I don't know if that would be something that the planning commission would like to recommend in conjunction with this. So we did go through the list of city-owned property and lots and we came to three possible venues. One is the visitor center, the Amtrak's train station, which would require them having to set up a tent because there's not a structure, but there are restrooms available there, so that would be beneficial. And then the last, our two vacant lots located on Gene Autry. Again, this would require them bringing in tents and then they would have to bring in all the other facilities necessary to have an event. So those are the three that we felt were the most viable options. We are, you are not required to recommend all or any. Your recommendation could be to repeal the special events from the Palm Springs municipal code on cannabis. So at this time, if you have any questions or comments, I'm here to answer them.
Does anybody have comments for staff? We'll start with Mr. Rotman.
Yeah, could you pull up the map? Because I was a little unclear where the Gene Autry properties were located.
I don't have that on the slide. I don't know.
Yeah.
So they are south of Dyna Shore, immediately across from the Surf Club essentially. There are two city-owned properties on...
Can you, yeah, in the packet, there was a map, but it was unclear exactly which, because they would be on opposite sides of the street, because one's even and one's odd?
They are on the same side. And I thought that was odd with the address as well. And they're directly...
Those two.
They're next to the Surf Club, not across the street. So they're on the same side of the street as the Surf Club.
They're not across from the Surf Club?
No, they are, well, they're across, they're not like across the street. Yeah, you're right, sorry.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you for that clarification. So it's these two.
And the Surf Club's here.
No, Surf Club's here.
So it is across the street.
Yeah. Yeah, no, it is. It's across the street. Not across that street. So this is, this would be east. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Murphy.
I have a question about the visitor center location. That's an inside structure, isn't it?
Correct. And we could limit the type of consumption. So we could say that if that location were approved, there would be no smoking, it would be limited to edibles, so and baby. So there are different forms of consumption and we can limit those with regard to location.
Okay. So if that was a location, it would not involve smoking?
Correct. We would prohibit the actual smoking form of consumption.
Okay, thank you. That was at the visitor center?
Well, but by the same token, couldn't they just use the parking lot at the visitor center? That way they could use the restrooms and facilities inside?
Yes, absolutely. So that would be the other option, that if they chose to do it outside, they would have to have a tent with some odor control, you know, just restrictions there. And then they could have the smoking outside.
So basically, any of the options would require a tent and odor control.
Correct.
I have one other follow-up comment. If it is the visitor center and you are outside or the congregation is outside, what about access to the tram? Wouldn't there be people, customers going up that road to go to the tram, including kids?
Yes, and so that's why if there was outside, it would have to be completely restricted, the vision, visibility for the public. So the tents would have to take that in consideration to make sure there is no visibility.
By that token, the train station is the least obvious location.
Pardon?
The train station would be the least obvious location for minors or passersby's, because no one bloody goes down there. Half the people don't know where it is.
It's been a few years since I was actually inside the visitor center. My recollection is that it's quite small and that there, it's relatively open. So it would be hard to accommodate visitors coming and asking for information, as well as having a special event limited to cannabis-related issues. Or has the building been subdivided at all since then?
Not that I'm aware of. And these are all, these were the best options and we know there are still some challenges and that's why we were seeking further direction. We just wanted to have something to present to you.
We're outdoors, yeah. Okay. I see a couple lights still on. Do you have questions or are those residual? All right. It looks as if you're looking for a recommendation from the planning commission, kind of an either or, or any of the above, or a completely different one. One would be that we recommend to the city council that we repeal the existing temporary events ordinance that would allow these events and that is, was brought forward, as I recall, in response to very low demand from the public or very few requests, but we had had at least one person ask for a permit.
Yes, in 2019, when we did the ordinance revisions, that was shortly after the state allowing local jurisdictions to identify their own locations. And as stated in the previous staff report, ideally, our vision was to have these events at the convention center and that was prior to us being informed that it was not a viable option because it's on trust land. So in the, since the time we adopted to now, there's been a total of two inquiries, four events. So it's not something that's in high demand. And looking at the locations available and the restrictions from the state, we really have limited options if we wanted to move forward with this.
I have a question about parking. The visitor center seems to have very limited parking, so, and it still will be open to the public. So it would need to be able to have parking for those people just coming in to get general information, plus those people attending the cannabis event.
So they would be subject to our special events permitting process as well. So they would have to present like a parking plan. I know some of our events on streets with limited parking, they have off-site parking and they offer like shuttles and so they would have to come up with a solution for that.
Yeah, so furthermore, the same issue exists with the train station. I don't know how many parking spaces there are in the train station. And on the public lot, there's absolutely no parking. So I'm just trying to think of the feasibility of the three sites based on parking and public access. And it seems a train station might be a better option for having bathroom facilities and easier access to parking on just the dirt next to the paved parking lot. Just a comment.
Do we have other questions? Okay, more comments. Open it up to questions, excuse me, comments then, and see what the commissioners think we should support.
Yeah, of the three that were presented, I would definitely exclude the visitor center. I think the potential for traffic would be untenable. I think you probably need to get approvals from the tramway authority because they control that road for access. I don't think they'll agree to that personally. And you've got a heavily residential neighborhood just upwind of that or downwind of that. So I don't think that's really a viable location for this. The other two I have less hesitation about, as long as you can maintain the parking on the site itself. And then, you know, I don't, I don't know what the access would be on Gene Autry. Is it divided at that point?
Is the road divided?
Yes, is the road divided at that point?
No, you can, it's, there's no median. You can make a left turn or...
All right. Yeah, just something to consider also is just vehicular access and, and, you know, the amount of potential traffic that might be going in and out of those locations.
Commissioner Murphy.
I agree that I think the only site on here that would be feasible is the Amtrak Center, train station rather, for the reasons mentioned, parking, access to a restroom and its remote location. I don't think the other two sites are feasible, from what I can tell, for the reasons mentioned. And I wouldn't be in favor of repealing the temporary events code personally.
I have a question on, forgot what my question was. Keep going. I'll come back to it.
All right, I'll offer a couple thoughts that I have. Like the others, I don't support the visitor centers location, but kind of for different reasons. This is entrance to a city, people are first coming in and stopping, getting the information. I would have the same reaction, I think, if we opened it for beer busts or, you know, different types of uses that were not the wholesome, adult-oriented and family-friendly that we are trying to market ourselves on being. We are trying to promote Palm Springs as being a healthy community and that doesn't spell out the kind of reception that I would recommend. The Amtrak train station and the vacant lots on Gene Autry, I don't have a strong feeling about one way or another. I do think that it would take, that it would probably need to be handled under something very similar to our temporary use permits, where you have to prove where your parking is, how you're getting accommodated, where you're setting up your porta potties and traffic control and everything else, just because they are not supported. They're just pretty much vacant land in the middle of nowhere. So it would be something that the city would have to administrate. And I kind of am in favor, I think, of Commissioner Murphy's recommendation that we suggest that this be repealed. I think that at this point, there isn't demand for it. If we've had two requests in five years, that doesn't sound like there's a heavy demand. The state of California, as they've implemented regulations to permit cannabis consumption and sales and distribution, has moved very, very, very slowly in, taking baby steps one thing at a time, one thing at a time. And I think it will catch up, that they will catch up to what is supportable and requested from the public. The fact that you still can't have cannabis consumed on a property that has an alcohol license, things like that, there's definitely the market demand for it. There certainly are probably ways that it could be effectively administered so as to to not present any kind of public safety concern. But the state isn't there yet. And I think that we don't necessarily need to be leading the state and kind of creating an infrastructure of rules and regulations for almost no demand. And that if we don't find a large increase in volume of requests or of interest, that we can sit tight for another five years until the state regulations better reflect what's going on in the public and what the demand is.
I remember my question now. It's regarding the Amtrak site, is that, do we need permission from Amtrak, or is that city?
It's city-owned.
Okay.
Does anybody have a motion they'd like to propose? Or a different idea altogether, from what's been presented to us?
Well, since we're just at, being asked for a recommendation, it seems like if we were to choose from the existing ones, the Amtrak station sounds like the most feasible location, if the council decides to go forward.
This is our opportunity to recommend to council that they do or don't go forward. If we think it's a good thing, then yes, we recommend a location. If we don't think it's a good thing, then...
No vested interests one way or the other.
I don't have an issue with the Ginautry properties as well, so...
That would be a second, but there's no part, the parking porta-potties and all that, it's just gonna be more expensive, yeah.
It's gonna have to be totally self-contained, so...
Which may prohibit them from doing, maybe cost prohibitive.
Commissioner Murphy?
I, I guess somewhat reluctantly would agree to put this, put the two, those two locations forward, Ginautry and Amtrak. That's not to say they'll ever, there will ever be events there, but it would at least create more of an opportunity to study it further.
But that does raise the question, is, is this only consumable products that are purchased on the site, meaning you, you can't bring your own stash from home to smoke it?
Correct.
And how are they gonna police that? I mean, are they gonna have to search everyone to have a joint in their socks?
Right. Correct, so it is difficult. I've been to various conferences where it is prohibited, and people find a way. So, we would require security, we would require to have even, you know, our city staff, we have dedicated cannabis code enforcement, they would be required to, you know, visit the site and meet with the organizers. So, there are ways, but it still would be a challenge.
Let me just make another comment. The other thing, in addition to not having a, much of any demand for these kinds of events here, I haven't heard anything that says this, these types of events will benefit the cannabis businesses here, the existing ones.
That is correct, and we actually had one of our work group members ask if we could codify that only our local operators be permitted to participate in the events, and that would, I think that that type of restriction might be challenging, because most of the event organizers aren't from the Valley.
Yeah, so to me, that's another factor, is, I mean, we want to support the businesses here, and the incremental value to having cannabis tourists come into town, I think, seems pretty minimal to me, so...
But do the organizer have an idea? An idea of how many people they would expect to attend this?
It's, it's difficult to say. There, I know in other cities where they allow them, they report that there's hundreds, some report thousands. That's what they report, but I, I personally have not attended any of these events to know firsthand. I know that when we have event organizers who inquire, they make big promises, so they might be exaggerating on those numbers.
Is, is there some benefit? I mean, I'm assuming some of the vendors will be manufacturers of various products that are sold at our local dispensaries? So, is there some economic tie-in there?
There's different types of events. So, there's the full-on expos where it's for, mostly for consumers, there's trade shows where you have different types of businesses coming to promote their products, and, you know, they're working with, to market to other businesses. So, in that sense, there could be, and I know the city of Long Beach actually codified that at their convention center, they could have only trade shows and no consumption, so strictly for education and marketing purposes. So, that is one option, if you really wanted to promote that, that we could look into.
I'd see that, as it is now proposed, or is now explained, each of the different types of events do allow consumption on the premises.
Correct, but we could restrict that.
But we could recommend that that be different. Okay. Do you have a sense for how many of the state's 482 cities have special event permits?
Twenty-two.
Any, are any of those in the Coachella Valley?
Cathedral City, Desert Hot Springs allows it, and I believe India is still silent. I know that if there are state fairgrounds, those are, the state allows it, you wouldn't need the local authorization, so, the local identification of a location.
Okay.
And do you have information, like, for the events that have had, happened in other cities, the economic benefit for that municipality?
The last report I had is that these events were not large generators of tax income. And that was, that came directly from event organizers who contacted our city when we asked, you know, what would the tax benefit be for the city? And because they're still so early, it's not large, they're expecting that to get better as the years progress, but at this time, there's not a huge economic, and we just reduced our tax rate, too, so it would be even less.
Thanks.
I will entertain a motion.
I'll take a shot at it. I would move that we recommend to city council that, I'll bifurcate it. A, if going, if we do decide to maintain one, that we go with either the Amtrak station or the city-owned vacant lots. And B, in the alternative, to really decide whether or not it's even worthwhile for the city to host the event at all. And actually, I'll throw in a C, we're always, they could always use the convention center for retail, there's no special requirements for that, there are tons of spaces, they could have retail-only, I mean, you know, non-consumption events.
You can't have any cannabis at the convention center. They had an educational cannabis cultivation, there was no sales, there was no product, and the organizers were fined by the tribe.
So, let me see if I can restate your, your motion. Your motion is a conditional one. If the policymakers, meaning the city council, would like to provide an opportunity for special cannabis events, then the planning commission recommends that the two locations that be allowed would be the vacant lots on Ginautry or the Amtrak train station.
Right. Can we, can we add a, to that, a, the concept of a, the recommendation would be a pilot program, like a one, a one-time?
That's always a good idea.
Expectation that we're gonna let this go once, if it goes at all, and see what happens.
That's an excellent idea.
It could be a pilot program for an event, or for one year, or something?
You can ask for a one-year review. We did that with our vacation rental ordinance, ask for if we reviewed in a year.
I like that.
Director Gethard's amendment to the motion is happily accepted, that the program be reviewed at the end of one year. All right, do we have a second?
Just a question, are you proposing to repeal the ordinance?
No.
No?
No. That, we're proposing, we're saying, if the policymakers want to have a program, that, that they leave the motion, or the ordinance in place, and that these be the two locations subject to review after a one-year period.
I'll second.
All righty. Then we have a roll call vote.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Rotman?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Alain?
Yes.
Thank you for the time you've spent in putting this together and researching the options, it's uncharted territories. All right, new business, we have none. Planning Commission reports requests and comments. If there are none, then we can move on to the planning director's report, and I know he has requests and comments.
Always. A couple of things, Anita sent an email around about the distribution of the iPads that we're looking to roll out in the next couple of weeks, so just putting that on your radar is something we'd like to work through and get distributed to you all. As you know, we're not distributing the printed packages anymore, and so the iPads will ideally make life a little bit easier in the absence of that. The other thing that it will do, which will be helpful, is especially on an item like one B tonight, where there was a lot of public correspondence, and as you know, we kind of, especially in that kind of situation, are batching them and sending them at the end of the day, ideally, you would have access to them throughout the day. And so, we will be uploading them into a file that will be accessible from the iPad screen, that you'll have almost instantaneous access, so it should sort of ease some of that pain as well, where I know you're getting them all at night, sometimes mere hours before the meeting, and, and so we'll be able to distribute those a little more frequently, especially for those high-volume projects. So, reach out to Anita and confirm when you're able to come in and go through that process and get that set up. The other thing that I wanted to make a request for is we, if you recall, a couple of months ago, we had one of the sub-areas within the Miralong community come in, or was going to come in, and then the, the item was continued, but it was in your package for the multifamily parcel, and so we unpacked some concerns that had come in from the public, as well as questions from you all, and just some other items from the applicant themselves. And we're working through a process right now to revise that application with them. I think, and they have requested this, it would be helpful if we could maybe appoint a subcommittee to work through that process with them. They have some questions that they want to work through before they come back in a public forum and sort of present what they're thinking, and so if we might...
I thought that we already had a subcommittee working on that.
Different, I, I know there are so many different sub-areas within Miralong, so we, we had a subcommittee for the single-family portion within Miralong that has met, and that is coming back to you shortly. This is the multifamily piece, it actually never came before the commission, it was in your agenda package, and then we continued it before, you continued it before the meeting started, or as part of the agenda setting. So, this is a multifamily parcel, and so, you know, conditions have changed since it was originally entitled, and there is a preliminary, preliminary plan development district on the site, they're looking to come in for final, and it, it may just warrant some changes to the preliminary plan, and so again, I think it would be good if we could get sort of two or three members, I guess, two members, given our current composition, to, to form a subcommittee to have that conversation with them before it comes back to the full commission, so if amongst the four of you...
And do you know, do you know if they're looking for suggestions specific to architecture or site planning or circulation?
I think it would be helpful to have an architect, so I will look at the one looking away, from the commissioner looking away from us, and then, you know, entertaining anyone who has interest and expertise to help.
So, let me just ask a question about it, because I will be basically unavailable until September.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So, okay, and I think, so it would go through a full architectural process also following this, so I, I don't know that we need to focus too much on the architecture. What I will say in response to your question is, they are looking to have these conversations during the summer, so that they can minimize the sort of gap in coming back to you all in the fall. So, it's a good point, whoever is going to volunteer ideally is available to meet throughout the summer. I'm thinking maybe two meetings.
I'm gone, July and, or excuse me, August and September.
Okay.
I am here, I have no place to go. I will be unavailable for the last two weeks of, what month is that? August, otherwise, I'm here and available, and we can check with Chair Wermuth and with, do you know if Commissioner Miller is out of town?
Commissioner Miller, I believe, is just out of town tonight, so it could be that you all agree that Vice Chair Alain, and then perhaps one, and Commissioner Baker, I'm not sure if you're interested and available, but if you want to make the recommendation to us, that one of Commissioner Miller, Baker, or Chair Wermuth, based on availability...
Well, my availability is only after 5:00 PM.
Okay, so why don't we do that, then, if, if that's what you wish, to recommend yourself, as well as one of Commissioner Miller or Chair Wermuth?
We'll do rocks, paper, scissors.
Okay, perfect. All right, helpful, thank you. There is a memo before you regarding ARC appointments, so a subcommittee of Chair Wermuth and Commissioner Rotman, as well as the ARC liaison Ken Lyon and myself, have been conducting interviews to fill a number of vacancies that are currently on the ARC. We've, we've gone through that process, the process is still underway, but we are looking, obviously, the terms are up June 30th, so we're looking to make some appointments tonight, so that we have a functioning ARC for July. And so, the recommendation of the subcommittee before you all tonight is to appoint, I believe, four members that are listed on that memo to the ARC, their, their terms would begin July 1. That does leave one full member vacancy, as well as up to two alternate vacancies, so three positions that would remain vacant on the ARC, if you agree to appoint those members. With some of the people who have, have termed out, we are short a landscape architect. So, the code does require that the composition of the ARC include a landscape architect, we will not have one, so the, the one full-term member, we kind of need to keep that spot open for a landscape architect. We do have somebody who has applied, since we conducted the interviews, that we are looking to schedule an interview with in the coming week or so. And we also have a couple of other sort of late, or applicants that came in a little bit later that we'll be working through as well. So, I do think that we will have the ability to fill those vacancies, just not tonight. And so, ideally, we would bring those three vacancies back to you at our meeting on July 10th. So, if, if you all are in agreement with the recommendation of your subcommittee, we could sort of take a motion on that, and I can also ask Commissioner Rotman if he wanted to add anything about the recommendations, or anything about the process, not to put you on the spot.
Well, we interviewed Anna Bastin and Jim Harlan, and I think both are very strong candidates. They bring in different, they have different backgrounds, and Anna is an interior designer, but has done a lot of construction, and is a married, is married and relatively new mom, I guess, three-year-old. So, and then Jim has been around Palm Springs and involved in the modernism committee, and been published many times in different magazines for his work, so I think they're both good additions to the ARC.
And then the other two, the other two members would be, our current alternate, Dan Thompson, would be promoted to a full member, and he's been an excellent contributor to the committee. And we would be bringing back John Walsh, who has also been an excellent contributor to the committee.
I certainly not only trust, but rely upon the recommendations of people who know more about this than I do, and Commissioner Rotman is one of those, as is Chair Wermuth, who's not here, and having staff involved, I'm prepared to move approval.
So, do we need a motion?
That was a motion.
If we can get a second, and just about...
If we get a second, yes. That was supposed to be a motion.
Go ahead, Carl.
I'll second the motion.
Vice Chair Alain?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Rotman?
Yes.
Commissioner Murphy?
Yes.
And one last update, we, and I, I'm already hearing some conflicts, we have a very full agenda shaping up for July 24th meeting. Several big items that are likely to have hearings, that will likely have a lot of public input. One of the items is our general plan update, and I think, given the other items on the agenda, it would probably be a disservice to you and the public if we sort of do that on the same night as other large agenda items. And so, one of the things that we are considering is whether we can hold a special meeting just for the general plan update, to get that wrapped up before the summer break, so we can queue it up for council at the beginning of September. And we are looking potentially at the week of July 29th to have a special meeting. And so, I know there are only four of you here tonight, but are there any, okay, so I see Commissioner Murphy is already in a conflict, and Commissioner Rotman, so we will reconsider that further, so that's the end of my update.
Is it possible to move it forward into earlier July?
I wouldn't want to commit to that. I wouldn't want to commit to that tonight, simply because Assistant Director Newell has been leading that. And I know that we're still tying up some loose ends with the consultant. And so I just want to confirm availability and whether we would be ready. But let's -- we'll look at the calendar and maybe we'll see what we can do. Otherwise, you know, it'll be a four-week delay, which isn't really the end of the world at this point. It's been years. We're just anxious to get it wrapped up. And that's it for me.
Hold on. I'm reading the agenda. That -- it looks like that concludes the content for this meeting. We can thank our legal counsel for joining us here tonight. We don't always have somebody here in person, and it's kind of nice to see somebody. Sorry we didn't grill you. We'll save that for another meeting. That means that it's time for adjournment. We will meet again on Wednesday, July 10th, 2026. Meantime...
2026?
Yes. Like I said. 2024. Safe and sane fireworks. Have a great Fourth of July.